...are concerned about the lack of mental health resources that are available to high school students today. Based on our personal experience, the mental health resources you get in school are a coin toss depending on who your counselor is. Same with a psychologist and school nurse. Some counselors don't provide enough or the right resources that could help students that are struggling. This is something members of our troop have experienced and has led them to see that help isn't widespread and is as available as it should be. This raises another concern that even if a student is able to reach a counselor, they won't be able to get the help or resources they need due to counselors focused mainly on academic support and set of mental health issues. In September 2022, WRAL reported the Wake County School System is now offering in-school mental health services at 40 schools, provided by 16 therapists with plans to expand again soon. After reviewing the school mental health improvement plan, Policy S H L T 003, we were concerned that only 10 schools will be added to the rotation in Phase 3 and wondered about the timeline in adding those schools. In Wake County, there are 198 schools with 69 being middle and high schools. So even though 40 schools were served this year, the majority of students are not being offered mental health assistance at their school. There are resources for help on the main WCPSS webpage under Counseling Services, but not many options for resources inside the schools. The pamphlet we have created is not only in physical copies but also online so it can be easily accessible for students. This pamphlet has a collection of different resources relating back to mental health from offering help to students who are struggling with depression and anxiety to students who may be facing abuse, whether that be at home or in an unhealthy relationship. Some of the resources included within our pamphlet include links and QR codes to the National Suicide Hotline, the Trevor Project, the National Domestic Violin Hotline, and many more. We aim to create a collection of reliable sources that offer the most help to students. Our goal is to get these resources to as many people who need them as possible. We know there is more work that can be and should be done to increase mental health support and hope the Board will support our efforts and allow these pamphlets to be shared with Wake County High Schools and even more in the future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Harold Bodie, followed by Mary Richardson. Harold Bodie. And Mary Richardson will follow Mr. Bodie.
Good evening. My name is Harold Bodie. I'm the CEO of Neopart. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My company is the other choice on an item before your agenda today called "Services to Provide Inventory and Parts Ordering Services," which is essentially picking the business to run the parts room that provides all the parts to the maintenance facility. In addition to the $3 million management fee, the school district will buy about $30 million of parts through this contract from this vendor. So there's about $33 million at stake in this contract, which I think underscores why it warrants taking a closer look. First, I want to commend the county on running your parts room with a third party. Many school districts and bus fleets around the country are moving to this type of business model, and my company has done this for 16 other bus fleets around the country. It's a growing trend. I'd like to give you three reasons why you should pause to more thoroughly understand the contract you are approving. First, potential savings on the table here is several million dollars. The savings on the management fee alone, ours versus theirs, is 2.3 million, and that equates to 49 annual teacher salaries and about 129,000 hours of more bus drivers. This savings is only the management fee portion as well. An aspect of our proposal was guaranteeing savings on the $30 million of parts spent. Next, second, there is clear evidence that a very thorough procurement hasn't been done here. The RFP was issued to the public only two weeks before the due date, and no site visits were allowed. This is highly unusual. These big procurements are usually open for several months, and bidders are invited to visit on-site. But more than anything else that I can say today, the fact that the incumbent's first offer was selected without any negotiation is truly shocking. The fact there was no attempt to negotiate a better price, I think, is a red flag that this deserves to be, the whole procurement deserves to be looked at a little more closely. Finally, you have a viable option to more thoroughly understand this choice: hire a third-party consultant to evaluate the procurement. The payoff and savings would be a hundredfold if there's a different decision made, but even then, but even without that, you can save a fair amount of money just by negotiating with the party that's about to be selected. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Richardson, followed by Caitlin Daly.
I'm Mary Richardson. I live in Holly Springs. The original topic I was intending to speak on tonight was not listed on tonight's agenda. Your budgeting is what I landed on instead once again. And looking over the budget items set to be voted on tonight, I found the consulting contract for 2324 to be quite interesting. The Board is being asked to approve $1,060,800 to bring the total contract value to $10,392,674.50 for Cummings Management Group Incorporated. It's currently providing direct executive management oversight to the facilities, design, and construction department. Okay, I'll give you, we need nice buildings for our students to come to. But Cummings is also working on facilities organizational alignment, review and refinement of processes and procedures, and capacity development in areas including stakeholder relationship management and professional development. Stakeholders? Who are the stakeholders? I say it's the students and the parents of the students. But funding is available for this contract because the CIP program management budget was canceled, and an annualized cost reduction to this contract of $687,440 is being realized as a result of transferring the contract position to in-house staff. Well, maybe we need to transfer more things to in-house staff instead of contracting to consulting firms. Although, maybe you do need a consulting firm for your bus repair. I'm sorry, but those numbers just don't add up to me. $687,440 is quite a bit short of the total contract value of $10,392,674.50. I saw contracts for landscaping and janitorial, but nothing to invest in quality curriculum or library books. They're not sexually explicit. How about funds to provide additional tutors for those students that are still struggling as a result of two years of closed schools? I think your budget priorities are a little skewed toward the outward appearance of the building and grounds and not on the actual stakeholders, which are the children you're responsible to educate. The parents that are entrusting you with their children are expecting them to learn reading, math, reasoning skills, and not to be turned into sexual deviants because you would prefer to provide them with inappropriate material during the school year. I would request that you stop wasting our tax dollars on the consultants and equity projects that you are not providing a valuable return on our investment.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Daly, followed by May Mitchell.
My name is Caitlin Daly. I am a Wake County mom, and I felt compelled to come speak to you, even though I do not like speaking in public, after the last school board meeting where I saw a tax on my community, the LGBTQIA+ community. I came to voice my support for those of us that do not support the banning of books and the removal of books in our public school classrooms. I want to thank the board members who are focusing on actual barriers to learning instead of culture wars. And I want to thank you for focusing on barriers such as food insecurity and providing resources to students that they may not otherwise get at home, and not on illustrations that any teenager with a computer can find much worse on Google for free. I also want to thank those board members who are doing what is within their power to advocate for paying teachers and support staff a livable wage. Thank you.
Our next speaker is May Mitchell, followed by Ashley Reynolds.
My name is May Mitchell. I have two children in the Wake County School System, and I've had an opportunity to speak before, and I imagine I will probably continue to speak, even though my words and thoughts are not new or original. I am hoping to provide balanced feedback to counter a very vocal minority because of the importance of speaking in the face of bigotry and hate and the cost of silence to our staff and students. One of my favorite quotes by the late Justice Ginsburg is about the power of dissents. Dissents are written by one or more judges expressing disagreement with the majority opinion of a court, and the dissents are not law, however, they can carry significant weight, and they're often cited and used to make changes and even reversals in the very laws that they're written about. Her quote is, "Dissents speak to a future age. It's not simply to say my colleagues are wrong and I would do it this way, but the greatest dissents do become court opinions and gradually over time their views become the dominant view." So that's what the dissenters hope, that they are writing not for today but for tomorrow. A dissent or a thoughtful criticism that makes a real contribution takes so much time and effort because they're not reactive. They're proactively creating what's next. I see a lot of reactions in this space. I'm witnessing these meetings becoming more and more divisive, and I'm witnessing people discharge their fear and rage on all of you. And this is not the appropriate place to do that, and it feels important to me to acknowledge that publicly. I want to also use this time to express gratitude. The Wake PTA DEI team hosted a Courageous Conversations workshop for the community. There are many people on the panel, from a school psychologist to a House Representative from our state. But what I found most powerful from the panel was the voices of two students in high school, one who is an African-American young man and another high school student who identifies as queer. It was incredibly meaningful to me to hear from them the harm of book bans and how important representation is to them and their friends. I will continue to say that one of the biggest strengths of the school system is the diversity within it. I also recognize that can be incredibly challenging because of having to meet such a wide array of needs. I also want to express my gratitude to the school board members. Tyler Swanson, I voted for you, and I appreciate your voice and representation of my community. I've had the privilege of knowing Ms. Monique Johnson-Hosler in a previous professional role, and I'm thankful to have your voice on this board to speak for students, families, and staff. I do not have the privilege of knowing everyone on this board. I recognize that you have chosen this role to support our public schools, and regardless of whether we agree on what that support should look like, I appreciate that you have chosen to act. I'll end with a Brene Brown quote that I am trying to internalize.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ashley Reynolds, followed by Susan Book.
Hello. Sorry. My name is Ashley Reynolds, and I am a Wake County parent. First of all, thank you to the board, and especially thank you to all the teachers and librarians in our Wake County schools. I would like to address what I want for my child at school and my parental rights. I want my child to feel included and accepted so he can be his best self, so he's comfortable to raise his hand and participate, and so he can absorb information without anxiety over his identity. And he does, thanks to Policy Code 1150. Now on to my parental rights. It is my right to know what my child is being taught, and I do, thanks to Policy Code 3210. I also read the syllabus, I volunteer in the classroom, and I talk to his teachers. Another thing I want my child to have is access to books, even books I don't like. I look forward to having difficult conversations with my son that I might not otherwise have. It's my parental right that he is provided reading materials deemed appropriate by his school librarian. For some of you, this may be surprising, but I also get a pit in my stomach from things in books. Sometimes I feel uncomfortable. I take a deep breath, and I use that and teach it into a teaching moment. But has my son ever come home and shown me things from the school library that gives me that feeling? No. I can go to his school library and see what he sees. I can talk to his librarian about the books he's interested in, and I can talk to him about books I don't want him looking at, and I can access that information. My parental rights are fully intact within his school library. We, parents who are not offended by books, still have worry and fears over inappropriate information, just like all parents. Roblox, Pornhub, Fortnite, Discord, these are the information outlets we worry about. On these sites, we have little to no control over what is seen and heard. These things are not allowed in our schools, Policy Code 3226-4205, and for that, I am grateful. So thank you again, school board, members of our school staff, and especially librarians.
Our next speaker is Susan Book, followed by Carolyn Bahe. Susan Book, followed by Carolyn Bahe.
Superintendent Moore, I am not sorry. Farewell, Superintendent Moore, and thank you for all the many ways you've served Wake County. Thank you for doing what you could to keep my child and every child safe in very dangerous times. That is one of your legacies. Don't be ashamed of it. Wear it proudly. You've heard us rant and rave. You've stoically endured. You've represented us very well, here at the board, but also in our community. You have been a shining star for Wake County. My child got to go to the Wright School for a small period of time, to restart school, and I have you know that not only do they let their children graduate the school, but all employees go through a graduation as well. So I hope today you feel that you have graduated into a new, wonderful life. The first time I met you, of course, I confronted you about the crisis in special education, and I still feel that this is an ongoing crisis, and I urge the board to take up this problem, this crisis. I urge more then, and I urge you all now, that, sorry, that this is an all-hands-on-deck problem. This is not something that we can just put aside. We need all hands on deck. So you've done a lot, Superintendent Moore, and I thank you, but there is so much more left to do. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Caroline Bahe, followed by Janet Peterson.
My name is Caroline Bahe, and I live in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the mother of a rising kindergartner, so I hope to come visit you for the next 13 years here, Class 2036. I've had the privilege of going through the process of looking at kindergartens and elementary schools for the past six months, and it has been a journey. I have visited three different elementary schools, and we've finally settled on one, and all three of those schools are incredible. Thank you. When I took my child to the elementary school that she's going to now, the first thing she walked into was the media library, and her eyes just lit up. She's so excited. And as a parent, I just can't believe she's old enough to go to school, but it's amazing to see her so excited. And I just want to say, as a mother, I do not support banning any books, and I am... just, thank you. That's all I have.
Our next speaker is Janet Peterson, followed by Janet Weiss.
I want to talk about the Pavement Education Project. The website is pavementeducationproject.org or .com. It's a group of citizens that have read and reviewed books that are located in Wake County schools as well as books in schools from 19 other districts throughout the state. We have emailed you, we have read these books to you, we have all but begged you to do something about the inappropriate materials that are in the schools. Maybe when we get a new lawyer, maybe you'll take another look at 3200 and work on defining pervasive vulgarity in books. Maybe you will define it and develop criteria. I brought a lot of signs last time with the word count. It's not just the content, it's the word count, and still we get silence from you. See, I don't really understand. I want to tell you about someone called Jamie Wykoff. He's a lifelong resident of Burke County. He served his community professionally. He was a volunteer for two decades, a parent, and he made a series of YouTube videos that featured him reading excerpts from several books that can be found in his county and in Wake County. Okay? And every one of his videos included warnings about what he was going to read, and we also have that on our website. And in spite of that, his YouTube channel was shut down for explicit content and policy violation. If the content found in these books are too explicit for YouTube, how can they be appropriate for minors? So I really don't understand that. So my point is, why are you working so hard to keep these books in the schools? I also thought about Policy 3210. Why are you just saying parents have to challenge the books? There are lots of administrators and teachers who are unhappy about some of the books that are in schools, probably as well as in supplemental reading. You talked about students having a voice and what's appropriate. I think the administrators and educators also need that voice. I want you to do your job. I want you to help make those decisions on what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. This is not about books that we don't like. This is not about what your sexual preference is, other than we don't need to know. Children don't need to know what your sexual preference is. We don't really care what kinky thing you're into. Children do not need to know. Please do your job.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Weiss. And Ms. Peterson, if you could please, Ms. Peterson, as stated before, can you please take your materials back to your seat? Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Weiss, followed by Charles Washington.
Ma'am, they were, yep, just took them away. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and other members of the Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Weiss. My husband and I have lived in Wake County for more than 30 years. We raised our children here. Over the years, I have volunteered in Wake County Public Schools, and most recently, I was hired as a literacy tutor at a Title I Elementary School for the 2022-2023 school year. Every school day, after saying the Pledge of Allegiance, the school receptionist reminds the school community to remember our frogs: friendship, respect, order and safety, good judgment, and self-control. Tonight, I would like to talk briefly about respect. Every child in our schools and every child's family deserves to be treated with respect. Children and families come in all shapes, sizes, and colors. They have different backgrounds, heritages, and faiths. Children come to school to learn, and no matter how they look, how they learn, or what their background, race, ethnicity, religion, gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, or anything else that I've left out, they deserve to feel safe and respected. I am deeply troubled by negative comments and attacks on members of the LGBTQIA+ community, whether they are schoolchildren or family members of schoolchildren, staff, teachers or administrators, attendees of board meetings. They are members of our community and deserve to be treated respectfully. I'm also here to speak out against efforts to ban books in our schools. The fact is that many of the books that are being objected to are written by people of color or depict people of color or LGBTQIA+ characters. Residents of our community should not have books stripped from their shelves because a small vocal minority reads passages out of context and/or distorts the value of books. If those parents don't want their children to read certain books from the library, that is a matter that can be handled between the family and the school, but they should have no right to prevent other members of our community from having access to books, period. Thank you, Superintendent Moore, for your many years of service and your leadership, and thank you to our members of the board for your leadership and service. Thank you for this opportunity.
I'd like to remind folks to be respectful to the speakers. Our next speaker is Charles Washington, followed by Tom Everly. All right. Mr. Everly, are you here?
I'm here.
All right. You will be followed by Amy Williams.
My name is Tom Everly. My wife and I are longtime Cary residents. We raised our kids here, and they attended Wake County Public Schools from grades K through 12. I'm speaking in support of our school board, teachers, librarians, and school staff, and against those who want to force policies in our schools that would take us back to the 1950s. We are supporters of our public schools that create a great learning environment, support our children on a daily basis. We appreciate their efforts to constantly try to improve. We are concerned about the extremist groups that are trying to gaslight the public into believing that there is something wrong or nefarious with what is going on in our schools. The truth is that every day, our hard-working teachers show up to provide a learning environment where all children in our diverse community can learn and thrive. One of these extremist groups is Moms for Liberty. Here are a few facts about them. Their leadership at the national and statewide locations have a history of harassing school boards, teachers, and librarians, including being arrested and requiring police presence. They will not reveal their funding sources. They are aligned with organizations that want to privatize schools. They have stated that utopians, socialists, totalitarians, and the UN are using public schools to undermine freedom and Christianity. They have shown up alongside the Proud Boys, a white nationalist extremist group, at multiple protests. They actively reveal private contact information about you, board members, teachers and librarians who are then harassed at their homes and places of work. They are considered a hate group and extremist organization by the Southern Poverty Law Center. These extremist groups do not want to recognize the fact that our school population is diverse. It includes children of color, kids from other countries and ethnic backgrounds, and kids that are LGBTQ+. Yes, kids. They want all children to be raised in some fictitious Leave It To Beaver or Father Knows Best white patriarchal school system that ignores reality. They want to turn back the clock on progress that we've made to times that never really existed. In reality, the good old days were a time where people of color and LGBTQ+ community were oppressed and hidden away to make life conform to some straight, white paternal image, where those people who fit that mold could be comfortable. While change is uncomfortable, but it's inevitable. We've come a long way since the good old days of repression in the 1950s and 60s, and I'm not going to head back there. We need to keep and improve our current school environment where our children can all succeed and where they can read about and model people that are like themselves and learn how to support those that are different. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Williams, followed by Ben Chapman. Amy Williams, followed by Ben Chapman.
Good evening. I have some really heartfelt things to say here. I'm just a mom, a wife, and a mother of three kids here, and my husband and I are parents of three children that have attended Wake County Public Schools since 2015. And I had a very dear, close friend of mine ask me if I was against public schools, and that question kind of struck me. that question kind of struck me because I thought, no, I'm not against public schools. I'm a graduate of public schools. My husband's a Cary High School graduate right here, and I have immediate family that are teachers and staff in public school systems all around the states. I mean, I was first front and center in line trying to get the schools open, make mask optionals, attended and spoke at board meetings. I mean, I was one of the first speakers coming in here after the shootings in Texas last year. I've emailed elected officials and board members on school policies. You see, I've been trying to get my kids in school with a sense of normalcy since 2020, since they were in third and fourth grade. And now, since then, we've watched our daughter struggle in math, and there have been many tears at the kitchen table at homework time, and now I understand that couple that used to come here, week after week, about the math curriculum. I get it now. Permission slips are still coming home that they have the right to mask our children. I've been forced to have a conversation with our daughter at ten regarding sexuality, where she was really too young to understand it. We've also hardly had a week where at least one of my three children come home to tell me about the fights and the disruptions in class. And let's not talk about the code red and yellows that are more frequent in Wake County than not. So my husband and I finally sat down to write the pros and cons to keeping our children in public school, and the result was, the only thing keeping our kids in school was their friends. The cons are the lack of school safety, disruptions in class, school government overreach, subject matter being taught, non-age-appropriate books, decline in academics, busing, which is why we carpool, and no textbooks or curriculum sent home. So about six months ago, we started researching other options, particularly homeschooling, and we were shocked and surprised to find out during our due diligence about the amount and abundance of parents researching and walking in the same direction that we were. It was phenomenal. It was clearly apparent we were not alone. I was even more shocked to find out that many of the co-ops are capping and quickly due to the rapid increase of enrollments, and this really surprised us. We've had the privilege of sitting in and watching some of these various co-op classroom settings where they've been taught Latin to STEM, and I'm here to tell the board and the staff and the parents, if they're listening, that it is night and day. These kids are very smart, attentive, well-mannered, kind, welcoming, and they love learning. They don't have all this other static around him. Clearly, we have felt it was a better choice for our children. So the question that started this whole speech, am I against public school system? The key word is "system." I really wish public schools were better, but until the system is changed and we're pulling our three children out, I'm disappointed that all this time I was trying to keep my kids in school when, in fact, I should have pulled them earlier from a ship that I think will sink if these policies don't change. They're not coming back to Wake County this fall.
Our next speaker is Ben Chapman, followed by Colleen Miller. Ben Chapman, followed by Colleen Miller.
My name is Ben Chapman. I was born in Raleigh, and I'm a graduate of Wake County Public Schools, a Millbrook class of 2012, so go Wildcats. When I was a freshman, we had a freshman seminar to pick some topic, presentation for the class, in which we would conduct original research. And at fifteen years old, in 2008 or '09, I chose same-sex marriage. I wasn't even out to myself yet, but I was clearly curious, and in order to do research, I recall that I had to use the library as well as a school computer. I wanted to share that story and introduce myself as a local gay advocate and information professional. I attended NCSU and then UNC Chapel Hill's School of Library and Information Science. For the last four years, I've been working as an archivist and history consultant in Johnson County, North Carolina. On June 6, I delivered remarks to the Smithville Town Council, and it happened to be the day that the Human Rights Campaign declared a national state of emergency for LGBTQ+ Americans. I was there to relate to incidents that I won't get into here, but I broadly just wanted to ask you as members of the Board of Education to understand your duty to students and staff that identify as LGBTQ+ within the context of this national state of emergency. There are people that I know in Johnson County that are looking at Wake County and looking at Wake County schools because of the bullying, discrimination, and harassment that they are facing there. I think many of the other speakers spoke to some of my other comments, but really, I just want to say I'm thankful for the work that you're doing guiding public schools in Wake County. I'm the beneficiary of K through 12 education here in Wake County, and broadly, I want you to think about LGBTQ+ identity not as controversial, not as obscene, and it really is not a matter of sexual preference. I really don't like that phrase because the more inclusive term that really addresses the core matter is sexual orientation. And I understand that there might be some people who are snickering at me, but quite frankly, I've been emboldened to stand up and proudly proclaim myself as a gay North Carolinian because I'm here, I'm queer, and I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Just a reminder, whether you agree or disagree, please be respectful that someone is taking time out of their day to speak to us. And if you cannot find yourself able to do that, you are welcome to watch this on YouTube. And when it's your time to speak, if you have signed up to speak, you may come rejoin us or send us an email. Our next speaker is Colleen Miller, followed by Jennifer Smith.
My friend's going to hand out, I've got letters for each of you with a handout with the books that I've discovered in our Wake County Schools. Well, I really don't know where to start. You know what? Wow, I really don't. Looks like I'm going to be going off-script here. I'm really, you know, when did we start celebrating our sexuality? Yeah, you know, I'm offended with all this Pride Month thing. We take a whole month to celebrate your sexuality. Why is sex such a big celebration? We have one day, Memorial Day, to honor those that died for our country, to honor them, those that fought and died for the liberties we enjoy today. I'm glad, you know, I love my gay friends and family. I love them. I respect them, but they're not out there. My hairdresser, the other day, we were talking, I said, what do you think about Target? They were, I said, what do you think about that? He said, it's too much. He said, it's in your face. This is my gay hairdresser whom I love and I respect. So why are we getting it out of the bedroom? Keep it in the bedroom. It's a private matter. I don't care what you do in your bedroom, as long as it's legal. All right, I went off-script there. I apologize. I'm the grandmother of a middle schooler in Wake County Public School. I'm also a member of the Pavement Education Project. Last year, I read cover to cover forty, about forty obscene books that I found in the Wake County Public Schools, and I want to tell you, they made me sick to my stomach. I felt dirty and wished I could undo the images I saw and the vulgar texts I read, and to think these books are readily available to minor children in our schools. How dare you allow that? To date, the Pavement Education Project has reviewed almost two hundred books in Wake County's public schools and identified at least eighty-five titles, and the list is I've handed out. They violate North Carolina obscenity laws. The content of these books range from explicit sexual activities, nudity involving anal, oral, vaginal intercourse, and explicit references, two explicit references of deviant sexual activities such as sexual assault, bestiality, S and M. I mean, seriously, why are minors reading this material? If they want to get it on the internet and their parents allow that, fine. Books, we don't have room for, we need good books in our public schools. Books that would educate children in a manner that will help them to succeed in life, in adulthood, in careers, in college. I was going to read a book tonight, but honestly, I think I would throw up if I read the book. Here's the content of the book I was going to read, which has been made, and to, an R-rated movie. And this is a profanity content. It's disgusting. So please, you're spending more than $12,000 per student. Use it wisely.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Smith, followed by Dwayne Hanson.
Superintendent Moore and school board members, I appreciate this opportunity to speak. My name is Jen Smith, and I'm a product of public schools in North Carolina. My husband is a product of Wake County Public Schools, and our kids are currently attending public schools in Wake County. We have volunteered countless hours at each of our children's schools, which has allowed us personal insight into how invested our teachers and staff are in keeping our children safe and motivated to learn. Going on what I have witnessed, being in these schools and classrooms, I wanted to share how much I appreciate our teachers, teaching assistants, staff, including our library media coordinators, who unfortunately have been targeted by those led by ignorance and not personal experience. I also have spent time spending, time speaking with teens who identify as LGBTQ+ and what I've heard from them is they are reading these comments, they are hearing these things from adults in our communities who somehow view those teens as more of a threat than gun violence, underfunding of our public schools, food insecurity, or housing insecurities, et cetera. So tonight, I want to go on the record that I am thankful for our public schools. I support our staff, students, and families, including those who identify as LGBTQIA+ and their allies, and I am against book bans. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Dwayne Hanson, followed by Teresa Jones, and by my clock, Ms. Jones will be our final speaker until we pause, and then we'll return back to it after a pause and resumption of business.
I just want to congratulate Ms. Moore and Mr. Smith for keeping my kids safe. As an experienced corporate management developer and one of an army of grandparents, I was recently brought to my attention in an audit some missing items, glaring inconsistencies, biases, and equities in the posted thirty-two Ten, Policy Code Thirty-two Ten. Parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. Where materials in productive health, reproductive health, and safety signaled out for parent review while other subjects like SEL and critical race theory concepts are not addressed similarly? The clear definition of instructional materials and challenged material is missing. Do materials in books containing blatant racism, Marxism, communism, pornography, and sexualization of children fall under the definition of instructional materials? Where are clear guidelines for determining violations of constitutional or legal rights? Where are the guidelines for establishing a committee to review parental objections and the principal being involved in this process? When do the principals, teachers, parents, students, librarians, media coordinators, counselors, and community members become involved, and how? What are the guidelines for an informal discussion with the complainant? Where are the timelines for each of the stages of the complaint process? The policy assumes objections are rooted in constitutional or legal rights, but it suspiciously overlooks objections arising from personal beliefs and preferences. Ensuring diverse viewpoints and perspectives in the curriculum is vital for an inclusive and academically equitable education in learning life skills. What professional reviewing sources are considered and used? The vague and nonexistent selection process and composition of committees often leaves the door open to unfair and biased decision-making by some political, race, or sex activist board or committee members. Where are the guidelines to accommodate various parental perspectives during the objection review and decision-making? Where are the procedures, timelines, and criteria for appealing a biased or suspicious decision from the Instructional Materials Advisory Committee? To summarize, we grandparents would like these issues fixed promptly and honestly so the policy promotes transparency, fairness, and respect for all stakeholders in Wake County. Being retired, we have lots of time to follow up, conduct periodic reviews, take notes, and check your progress, and would like to serve on some committees as we prepare for the next election cycle in 2024. Now, you know that we know that both Policy Code Thirty-two Ten and Thirty-two Ten R and P need to be revised to provide the highest quality academic centered education possible for our students, including my dear grandkids. Thank you. Mr. Toddler, we will not be silent.
Our final speaker for now is Ms. Teresa Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Teresa Jones. I am president of WCPA Council, and I wanted to come tonight to say thank you to Superintendent Moore and because I thought maybe you could see, use a friendly face here tonight after the last several sessions, and I wanted to express my appreciation for you all. I crossed out all the stuff that I had written about Superintendent Moore after everyone said that she doesn't like public displays of appreciation, but I do want to thank her for her consistent attendance at our PTA meetings, for coming to our trainings, for making parents feel appreciated and as partners in the education system, and for always sharing information and for, more importantly, listening, listening to our concerns. I also want to thank the Board. Thank you for maintaining your commitment to do what is best for all students and for not pandering to the demands of the angry minority. Thank you for recognizing that all students deserve to see themselves reflected in their educational experience, from the staff to the curriculum to the books they find in the library. All students and families deserve to feel welcomed and safe in our schools and that they are not just tolerated, but celebrated for who they are. I was going to stay on the positive and just say thank you, but this is also Gun Violence Awareness Month, and the divisive rhetoric that has been broadcast across this podium for the last several months, I wanted to point out that books that our children have access to are not the problem. Words and ideas are not dangerous. Well, angry parents have been stoking fear and hatred about library books. There have been eight hundred children and teenagers killed by guns this year. North Carolina ranks nearly last for education spending and has the fourteenth highest rate of gun violence in the United States. These are issues that we should be addressing. It's time to stop inciting fear and hatred about books and pronouns and tackle the real threat to our kids. There's only so much that can be done as a district, and I appreciate the steps you have taken to increase safety, but as concerned parents and community members, we should be working together to demand that legislators pass common sense gun laws to make sure that the next school tragedy isn't in our own backyard. My daughter created this T-shirt after Parkland and a walkout at Moore Square. Five years has passed since that, and things have only gotten worse. Thank you, Jen.
That concludes this session of public comment.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Moore, and I'm a Wake County resident of fifteen years and a parent of a current WCPSS student and another WCPSS graduate. I just want to extend my appreciation to the Board for your dedication to equity and inclusion. I want the Board to know that there are a lot of parents of Wake County students who want our children to have access to books and curricula that represent everyone. I want my child to have access to appropriate sex education materials, and as I've always done as a parent, we also discuss those things at home. For us parents who have always discussed hard topics with our children, we very much appreciate when they are getting accurate and comprehensive information at school as well. I also want my child to be taught and have access to accurate historical facts. I believe that teaching accurate history is one of the ways that we can help course-correct our country's racist past and the mistakes of our country's past. And lastly, I would like to show my support to our LGBTQ+ students, family, and staff, many of whom I know and love, and encourage the Board to continue to support the community in your policies. Representation matters, and I support the Board's decisions along the way that have made it or will make it more clear that representation matters to you all as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cecilia Joyce, followed by Eileen Johansson.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Cecilia Joyce. I am a Raleigh resident and parent of two Inlow Magnet High School graduates, SCOEGS, and an educator with Wake County Public Schools. First, want to begin by congratulating Superintendent Moore on her impending retirement. I would also like to thank you for your many years of service to Wake County Public Schools. These last few years have not been easy, and you and your team have shown courageous leadership. Thank you. I would also like to comment on some recent events at board meetings that I have found troubling. There have been some very vocal folks standing before you demanding that certain books or materials be removed from schools or libraries. I implore you to continue dis- I implore you to continue to support policies which ensure students' freedoms to read and have access to materials appropriate for their age and curriculum. Furthermore, let's support educators who continue to offer our children texts which make them think critically and offer narratives and perspectives that may be different from their own. Let's be clear, book censors these days find books with black or LGBTQ characters or themes inappropriate. But adults are doing a disservice to young people when they think that kids are incapable of thinking for themselves, having difficult conversations, or learning tough truths. Let's continue to trust educators to do their jobs as the professionals they are. Let's trust kids and families to choose what books meet their needs. No one should be able to impose their views by making books inaccessible to an entire community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eileen Johansson, followed by Taylor Cordis.
Good evening. I'm just going to read a little, a little verse out of Luke. "It would be better for him the milestone be hanged around his neck and he cast into the sea than that he should offend one of the little ones." So we'll just start out with that. But I'm 73 years old. I'm probably the oldest person here. I, I was a high school honor student and college graduate, and I turned into a flower child during the sex drug and rock and roll era. That didn't work very well for me, and it didn't work well for many others. I believe that today is the result of that. Today, I thank the Lord that I recovered, was married, raised three daughters, and now have five young grandchildren, for whom I'm seriously concerned. This former honor student is wondering, what happened to public education and when did the Wake County Public School System begin promoting materials that are perverse and obscene? You defy studies that have proven the negative impacts of pornography and other age inappropriate materials on the mental health of children. You're promoting books that may put students in a higher risk for anxiety, depression, isolation, sexual assault, and suicide. I've read some of these books, and I'll tell you, as an adult, I couldn't sleep. They were pretty disgusting. So, you know, the very graphic nudity and all that. So I thought tonight I would, you know, no one has read anything, so I thought I'd read a little bit. "A Court of Thorns and Roses," that's in a middle school. By the way, two middle schools of Wake County and at least 20 high schools. Last time I looked, the middle school students are not young adults. So here, here we go a little bit. "His kisses deepened as his fingers slid between my legs coaxing, teasing. I ground against his hand, yielding completely to the writhing wildness that had roared live inside me. I raised my nightgown over my head and tossed it to the floor. Utterly naked before him, I watched his gaze travel to my bare breasts, to my abdomen, to between my thighs." You know what? We can't go on anymore. It gets more disgusting. So I'll stop here. You get the picture? The book contains graphic violence, explicit sexual nudity, obscene sexual activities, and mild profanity. I don't see how any of these books will enhance any child. When I look at these pictures and I think about them throwing their nightgowns on the floor and writhing naked with her boyfriend, do you like this? Are you buying pornographic books? But do you keep them at home? You don't spill them out for the world to know about. Sex is the apple. Adam and Eve ate the apple, and everybody here is eating the sexual apple, and there will be price to pay.
Our next speaker is Taylor Cordis, followed by Tom Capps.
Hi there. My name is Taylor Cordis. I am a proud product of Wake County Public Schools, Inlow High School graduate myself. Also have been an extended content standards for teacher in Wake County, and I'm currently a substitute teacher. I'll keep it pretty short, but I am here to say thank you to our board, who is fighting to protect all of our students, because despite what some people want to believe, LGBTQ, or I guess what they don't want to believe, LGBTQ+ children do exist. They do deserve to be represented in our schools. I see it as a measure of bullying prevention, just like it's normal for a little boy to have a crush on a little girl is no different than a little boy having a crush on a little boy, or a little girl having a crush on a little girl. And if we don't let our children know that these are normal things for their classmates to feel, you end up resulting in children who bully other children for being queer. And I don't think any of us want that in our schools. And so educating our children on how to respect those who are different from them is a very important part of our teaching process. I also want to point out, someone earlier said that children are the stakeholders of education. I couldn't agree more. I think they are probably one of the most, if not the most important stakeholders in education, because it is their education, and I think it's important that we listen to them. So tonight, we had some students here speaking about mental health crisis and the need for mental health interventions in schools. Our counselors' caseloads are overwhelming. They cannot meet up or keep up with the needs of our students. We had, last week, we had students, or at the last meeting, students were here talking about school safety. These are important things that matter to our students, but the one thing we are not hearing our students come here and talk about is wanting books banned out of their school. I think it's important that we listen to the most important stakeholders in education, and we prioritize the things that matter to them most, which is not book banning. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom Capps, followed by Becky Lou Hobbs.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Capps, Air Force retired, and I am a retired pilot and engineer, and also an 81-year-old proud grandfather of six. I appeal to the school board to make decisions that benefit most of the children in our school system and to avoid undue attention to children that profess non-biary lifestyles. We are blessed with an adverse, with a diverse culture in America, and I am amply familiar with multiple cultures. I've visited 80 nations around the world. I have lived in or served in five European countries and four Asian nations. I have visited all Western countries in Europe, 10 African nations, and 10 in Asia. I understand the needs of children globally. I come before you this evening in the authority of God Almighty. I live in awesome fear of Him, and I have no fear of any person, because I receive my every need via the power of the shared blood of Christ. I am not here tonight to represent any special interest, political party, or group that promotes immoral agenda. I'm solely here to represent and defend the needs and future of every child in Wake County. We all have the responsibility to guide and direct our nation in the way of wholeness, righteousness, and purity. Jesus taught that children are extremely important to Him, and that anyone without the faith of a child will not have favor with God or His kingdom. Any person who participates in a political party, an educational union, or government organization that thinks God will allow evil lies and deceptions to persist will be subject to God's perfect judgment and will be rendered impotent. I call on every member of the Board of Education to stand for all that is holy, righteous, and pure, according to God's standards. I call on you to be, to identify and root out and destroy every evil agenda, every false truth that undermines and subverts the freedom of any American citizen, and especially every child. Thank you for serving on the Wake County Board of Education and for all the sacrifices you make. Thank you for listening to my words.
Our next speaker is Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Mary Ann Kluckman.
Crowd in, since they're trying to keep it off the screen. Hi, I'm Becky Lou Hobbs, mom and Wake County resident for well over 40 years. Many parents have come and addressed the school board and superintendent regarding their promotion of pervasively vulgar materials at the expense of our children's education, as well as many other failures of the school system, only to fall on deaf or condescending ears. Soon, Katie Moore will be leaving Wake County schools, so let's take a look at the state of Wake County schools since she became superintendent in 2018. So first, the academic proficiencies of students have declined, and here are just two examples. Reading scores for third through eighth graders have declined 5% overall. And when you look at black proficiency rates, that alone has declined 32% under her rule. Hispanics, the same, 32%. Math I scores for middle and high school, students have declined 34% overall. And when you look at black student proficiency rates, that's declined 42%. Hispanics have declined 41%. There are now also more low-performing schools under her leadership, with now 19.7% of schools classified as low-performing. That's 38 schools. So as you can see, under Superintendent Moore, the quality of education for Wake County students has suffered, particularly for minority students. And because of this, parents have begun to seek other options. Since Moore has been in charge, approximately 3,500 students have left the system seeking other options. In other words, 2% of student enrollment has declined. This decrease in enrollment is despite Wake County's population growth of 2.2%. On top of this, she's continued to ask for budget increases each year, resulting in a 47% increase since 2018. So that's fewer students, despite the increase in population, and more money with fewer students. During the pandemic, Moore squandered the opportunity to partner with parents. Instead, she implemented policies that kept students out of the classroom and later limited and sometimes barred parents from being present at all. At one point, her staff recommended masking preschoolers in order to train them to willingly comply with future orders. And anyone in questioning this, go watch the February 1st, 2022 board meeting. And while we wish Katie Moore well on her retirement, the parents of Wake County are looking forward to a new superintendent. She's allowed quality academics to take a backseat to social issues, political agendas, and association demands. She leaves behind a plethora of problems to resolve: teacher shortages, staffing shortages, transportation nightmares, poor learning, lack of confidence with parents, age inappropriate and pervasively vulgar materials, just to name a few. We sincerely hope that the new superintendent will put academics at the forefront.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Kluckman, followed by Thomas Hudspeth.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mary Ann. I've lived in Wake County since 2001. I've got two kids, who are both K through 12 in Wake County. The second one just graduated last Tuesday. I am here to show my support for school librarians who are being attacked. I'd like to make three points. The first is that there are many people who do not want books banned from schools. Sometimes it seems like the loudest voices are the people who want to incite fear. But trust me when I say that those people do not speak for the whole county, and I can never think of a time where banning books turned out to be the right decision. Two, I would like to remind everyone, and for those who don't know, here in the audience, that librarians in Wake County are required to have a master's degree. Part of their schooling involves learning how to build an age-appropriate collection for their school. They're hired for their knowledge, yet sometimes it feels like the voices of the people who have no formal training are being listened to or trusted over the librarian's voices. Three, once age-appropriate books are chosen, parents still have a role, right, in helping their children choose books for themselves. So let's say, for example, my kid is terrified of natural disasters, so I would steer them away from a book about tsunami, let's say. But that doesn't mean that a student in their class can't read a book about tsunamis, or that someone in another classroom in the school should be deprived of reading a book about tsunamis, just because I don't want my children to read a book about tsunamis. Now, obviously, I'm aware that people aren't very concerned about tsunamis and natural disasters, but the principle's exactly the same. Just because I don't want my child to read a specific age-appropriate book doesn't mean that I have the right to say that a fellow student in their class or someone in the school can't read that book. My role as a parent allows me to restrict books for my own child, not anybody else's. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Hudspeth, followed by Nancy Haywood. Mr. Hudspeth? We'll hear next from Nancy Haywood, followed by Christina Spears.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'd like to thank you all for being here and for your dedication to our students, teachers, staff, and parents. I would like to thank Superintendent Moore for the years of service you have provided to Wake County. Your replacement has high standards to live up to, and I hope I run into you at the department store again, and hopefully there will not be someone hiding underneath the clothing racks next time. I am a product of Wake County schools myself, having lived here 49 years, so I think I've beaten most everyone else. I also have brought my children back to this county so they can be raised the same way I was raised, in a very open-minded and loving environment. So with that, I come here tonight to speak to you about a newly recognized, and I hate to say this, that it's actually here, hate and anti-government extremist group called Moms for Liberty. We hear them at our school board meetings every single time. They speak about book bans, something that is a disgusting subject. And as we can hear, they continue to speak.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We're not going to interrupt speakers, and we're going to add that time back. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. They've been recently recognized as an anti-hate group, and I would ask this board to please can make a policy to exclude them from being able to speak at future board meetings, especially considering that many of those who are the loudest speakers do not even have children in our schools. I would also like to ask that the two school board members who were backed by this group, if you would consider removing that support publicly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Spears, followed by Julie Page.
Happy Pride Month. Happy belated Juneteenth, y'all. I usually don't come up here in freestyle, but spirit is moving. All right. First, I want to thank this board for your hard work today. Y'all have had a really long day, so thank you for your hard work in sitting here and listening to all these public comments. Also, thanks for starting the process of reconciling the budget and keeping staff wages at the forefront and a priority. And I came here tonight to talk about how much I love public schools and why I love them, but I think lots of speakers have said that. I love them because they're open to every single kid in our community, and once they get into our doors, they should have whatever they need, and that includes books. And I also trust the professional workers in our schools, and that's why I love our schools so much. But I am going to keep it brief, chair my halfie, and actually use my time, why I stuck around to give flowers to Superintendent Katie Moore. And no, I'm not sorry, just like Susan Book said. I believe in giving flowers while folks could still smell them. This wouldn't, we would do this after July 1st, right? Let me say, I give you flowers for sharing your story with us, your story of coming to this country to live with your family and learn in our public schools. I wasn't going to cry. I give you flowers for leading us as an educator and a practitioner, constantly calling on your experience as a language teacher and an administrator to make sound decisions for staff and students in this district. I give you flowers both for your vulnerability and your bravery. I give you flowers for keeping us as safe as possible during a global pandemic. I give you flowers for fighting for an equity policy that codified core belief too, and supporting my team in the Office of Equity Affairs while I was there. I hope you'll find time before you officially transition and during your retirement to smell all of your flowers. You deserve them. Thank you, Katie.
Our next speaker is Julie Page, followed by Renee Sekel.
Good evening.
Good evening. Given recent events, I feel compelled to remind you that I am not a domestic terrorist, nor do I hate anyone in this building or in the school system. I'm just a mom that actually does care about public schools. I submitted 189 book challenges at the end of May, after getting brushed off, gaslit, pushed back, and condescended for the last 18 months. I am met again with more excuses as to why these challenges are being dismissed. Allison Reed sent a lengthy email full of incorrect, irrelevant, and gaslighting statements. I will be responding to that email and copying all of you, so that you can see for yourselves that current school policy, 3210 and 3210 R and P, are clearly being violated by your own staff. Interpretations and feelings are not policy. Now you are trying to change these policies due to issues, due to the issues and red flags that I have raised. I am thankful for Cheryl and Wing's common sense. Lindsay, Tyler, Lynn, Monica, we see you. You should be ashamed of these underhanded, deceitful, and dirty tactics. This is wrong, and it is not the way to regain trust with parents. I was going to read from the nasty books, but instead, I'll quickly show you pictures of how to find your G-spot and get it off in sex plus, how to stimulate the clitoris in sex plus, how to massage the prostate in sex plus. Disgusting. I find it ironic and hypocritical that the board talks about diversity, equity, inclusion, acceptance, mental health, and safety, yet you allow explicit and vulgar sex instructions in erotica on the shelves for any child to see. How do you plan to keep this perversion away from kids whose parents don't want them exposed to it? Can you guarantee that they will be protected from this filth? Supposedly, schools are safe spaces for all. I contend that they are not. Revise, redact, restrict, or remove. Finally, regarding Superintendent Moore's retirement, y'all sit here and praise her as if she's been the best thing to ever happen in Wake County schools. Her failures are blamed on the responses to the pandemic, which she developed, proposed, and pushed onto parents. She advocated to keep schools closed and then mask kids for as long as possible. She proposed budget increases year after year despite student losses. She has fostered an anti-teacher and anti-parent culture. She chooses to focus on social justice and equity. During this Pride Month, I ask you all to be humble, open your minds, and do better for the kids.
Our next speaker is Renee Sekel, followed by John Fleming.
Hey, y'all. Superintendent Moore, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for your service to the school system. That's really all I've got to say. I will say to Mr. Smith over there, y'all don't know me, you've never met me, but I have been at the back meeting a couple of times when you've spoken, and I have appreciated the clarity with which you discuss security issues and the way that you kind of lay it out so that parents like me can understand. Congratulations to you too, sir, on your retirement. I'm not going to take up my whole three minutes, I promise. I just want to talk about one thing that happened in my, one of my kids' schools. I have kids in two different Wake County public schools. And all three of them happened to be involved in the chorus program, both at Greenhope High School, and because of the incredible diligence and strength of will of the Greenhope High School chorus director, Mr. Botwick, also at Davis Drive Middle School, where he has started a chorus club. And I just want to kind of explain how it felt, a couple of weeks back, to be sitting at the chorus concert and see every one of those high school children stand up and cheer for the middle school kids as they sang "We Got to Go Together" from Grease. My kids were so proud, they were so happy, and just to see the unconditional love, support, and acceptance that those high school children extended to the little ones was just, I mean, I can't, well, I cry at everything, so that doesn't mean much, but still, it made me weep. Those kids are amazing. Our schools are amazing, and they wouldn't be the way they are without, in part, the wonderful educators and administrators and staff that they encounter day after day in our schools. You all should be so proud of the work that you do and the amazing outcomes that you all produce. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is John Fleming, followed by Mark Peterson.
Good evening, board members. My name is John Fleming, and I live here in Cary, and I have two grandchildren in the Wake County public school system. I'm also a product of the Wake County public school system. I graduated from Broughton High School, and I'm not going to tell you what year. First of all, Superintendent Moore, congratulations on your upcoming retirement. I think it's well-deserved, and to the others who are heading into retirement. I retired almost six years ago, and I highly recommend it. But I'm here tonight just to voice support to our librarians and our other school staff who screen and select the books that are carried in the school libraries and are available for the students to read. I've been reading a lot about the challenges and restrictions to various books recently, so I've decided that it's time to come off the sidelines and to speak out in support of our librarians and our students. I support the availability of a wide variety of books based on subject and content. I know our librarians work hard to ensure that the selection of books is appropriate and a good fit for the students. So to that end, let me just say in general that I'm aware that some parents espouse the need to restrict access to some books in the name of preserving family values. However, I suggest that different parents may have their own definitions of the family values that they want to teach their children. It's up to parents themselves to make decisions for their own families about what's necessary to provide a fulfilling education for their children. Those decisions should not be made by a small group of parents who may be pushing a different agenda. And one thing that I love about being a granddad with kids in the school system are the hard questions that they ask. We have very many good conversations, and I'm glad, and I hope they continue to have the background and exposure to ask those hard questions. So I ask that as you can, as you please support our school staff, and particularly our trained and qualified librarians, and provide a library and educational environment that's open and supportive of all of our young people. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mark Peterson, followed by Julie Stivers.
I'm here tonight to appeal to the board's better judgment, integrity, and common sense regarding the books that we've all been talking about, or most, many of us have been talking about tonight. And there's been a lot of comments about the appropriateness or inappropriateness of these books. I'm going to hold this up so that it can be seen clearly by anybody watching this. They can, they can hit this with their phone, and they can look at, I think the number was about 150, what's the number?
There are 85 that are.
There are 85 books represented on this website, and it'll show you the content of those books. It will show you the words. We've shown you some of the words. It'll show you the pictures. But I want to, you know, I want to take a moment to talk about banning books, since that comment has come up time and time and time again. I want to show you two books. These are two out of six books that have been banned just in the past two years. On March 2nd, 2021, on National Read Across America Day, a day that was established in 1998 by the National Education, National Educators Association, the NEA, and on the birthday of Dr. Seuss, this is Dr. Seuss's birthday, on that day, the White House banned his entire catalog from being read on National Read Across America Day. And these two books, I've got, I bought these two books because I wanted to know what all the fuss was about. What's wrong with these books? Why should they be banned? I told you last time I was here, a couple of weeks ago, one was the word Dixie. They're talking about the song Dixie. The song Dixie is mentioned in this book. This book is banned because of the name of the song. This book, this was if I ran the circus, by the way, this book, and to think that I saw it on Mulberry Street. This book has been essentially banned because it has a picture, you can't see it here, but it's a picture of an Asian man, which was stereotypical in the day that this book was created. It says, "A Chinaman Who Eats With Sticks." I'm showing this to you because the bar was set high to ban these books. If that's all it takes to ban Dr. Seuss, then I do not understand why the books that are on this website, these are offensive. If this is offensive, the excuse was, the content in these two books was offensive to some people. If you're not offended by what's on these books that these people here are complaining about, that are on this website, would you?
Our next speaker is Julie Stivers, followed by Isaac Moore. I'd also like to remind folks, I'd like to remind folks that your comments are to be made to the board and the members of this governing body. They are not for a YouTube audience. Ms. Stivers?
Hi, I'm Julie Stivers. I'm a school librarian, and I'm a mom, and I'm a reader. When we think about book challenges, it's important to remember that they are not new, only mutated. The American Library Association has been keeping data on book challenges for over 20 years, but before 2021, most challenges involved a single book put forth by a single person at a single school. It was personal, and it opened dialogue between educators, parents, families. Now, and we are seeing this play out in Wake County just like a script, challenges are not personal. Instead, they are based on lists and websites shared out by organizations who espouse hate on social media, and then they're copied and pasted at school districts across the country. I know the Wake County School Board is too smart to fall for it. A county that values critical thinking as one of the four Cs for its students wouldn't give credence to a challenge based on hearsay, buzzwords, or out-of-context quotes. At its core, these challenges overwhelmingly target stories written by queer and/or BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color, creators. These challenges are not about books or reading. They're about erasing stories and communities from school library shelves. They're about trying to tell us whose stories matter, and as educators, we all know whose stories matter, every student. This is a direct appeal to all of you who will find yourselves in the future with decisions to make about books. So some gentle reminders. All students that walk through the door of a school library deserve to see books on the shelves that affirm themselves, their families and communities, their lived experiences, and real, accurate history. Please, remember my student who said that they are still here, still alive, because they had encountered a book that made them feel seen. "This book saved my life," said another student. "I'm still here and breathing because of this author," said another. So if you're ever deciding whether to remove access to a book, please keep those student statements in mind. Do you want to rip those books away from students who need them, who are telling me, telling us, that they literally saved their life? And a last reminder, if we care about parental and familial rights, blanket book bans fly in the face of that. Think about it. Letting one parent make a decision for all of the other parents in their school doesn't sound like parents' rights. It's not representative, it doesn't sound like freedom, it doesn't sound like liberty. Instead, this intentional, funded, organized, top-down movement of book challenges and bans sounds like erasure, manipulation, and harm, and none of those are things, erasure, manipulation, harm, that should be the business of educators or this board. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Isaac Moore, followed by Michelle Morrow.
Apologies for keeping y'all late. Good evening. My name is Isaac Moore. I'm a graduate of Adams Elementary, East Cary Middle, and Cary High, and as such, am a direct product of the Wake County school system. Throughout my years as a student, I engaged in conversation with students and teachers of many different lifestyles, affiliations, and ideologies. During that time, I also engaged with many books and media, a good deal of which are on the chopping block of modern bans across the country. I can say categorically that this was nothing but a benefit to me. There is nothing that breeds critical thinking and empathy for others like interaction with outside ideas and backgrounds. It cannot be said enough that the efforts and calls to ban or otherwise attack access to media and curricula revolving around topics such as the Black, Indigenous, and LGBTQIA+ plus communities are effectively an attempt to relegate them to the footnotes in history. These are efforts to further marginalize the already marginalized. Individuals and groups peddling this hate and censorship will claim their concern as the safety of children. Do not be fooled by these wolves in sheep's clothing. Their concern is only to engage in a manufactured culture war predicated on hatred and exclusion. If one so truly cared for children's safety, perhaps they would have more to say on the issue of gun violence in schools, other than throwing tantrums on social media and brandishing their "Don't Tread on Me" bumper stickers. Our schools already obfuscate and cloak the true history of our country. It thusly must be acknowledged that the banning of books in essentially every case does nothing more than further cloud us in the ignorance of American exceptionalism and hegemony. I urge us all to recognize these grovels and pleas from some of the more malicious and misguided of our community for what they are: fascism at work. And when fascism comes knocking at our door, it should be met with nothing less than scorn and fervor. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Morrow, followed by John Amancukulu.
Hello, everyone. I've been coming here for five years now, and I was going to talk to you about some practical things that I thought you could change about 3210, but I've changed my mind. I've been really confused over the last five years as to why we spend 45 minutes to an hour of every public meeting talking about how great everyone is and how great everything is in the schools, and now I've figured it out. I've figured it out, because all these people came here to defend you all from hurtful words. This is obnoxious. Let me just say, there is one goal for the educational system. It should be to prepare children to enter careers to be productive members of society. It is not a counseling session, it is not a self-help area, it is not somewhere to find yourself, and we should not be led by the children, for goodness sake. The children are called dependents for a reason. They depend on us, who have fully-developed brains. You cannot feel your way through life. The issues that we are talking about, we are bringing you statistics, we are talking about scholastics, we are talking about funding, we are talking about busing, we are talking about trying to figure out how to make our children be as successful as possible, and I am sure that that is your goal. And what we have been called tonight is what they're claiming that we're saying to children. We're having an adult conversation. There are not children in this room. We aren't going into the schools and calling them names. They call us Marxists, and hateful, and bigots, and everything else under the sun. Well, let me tell you, less than 5% of the entire population of North Carolina identifies as LGBTQ. You guys all claim you want democracy. Well, you know what democracy is? It's the majority plus one. It's 50 plus one. You know what? More than 50% of the people in this state claim that they believe in God, Almighty God, who made us male and female, God who made marriage between a man and a woman, God who said that we must protect our children. The fact that we can stand up here and we know, we can brag about all of the wonderful graduations, but we know, we know the statistics. 50% of children did not pass their end-of-grade tests. What are we celebrating? We have children coming up here telling us how horrible the mental health crisis is. Why? Most of us went to public school, and all of our, all of our peers are not in mental health crises. We have to ask ourselves, what are we doing to our children? I'm going to say, we are discussing things with them that they are not emotionally, intellectually, and morally able to handle. That is what is causing the anxiety. That is what is causing the depression. That is what is causing the confusion. We need our children to be able to be children, to be able to be innocent, to be able to enjoy childhood, and not know all of the drama and all of the difficulties in adult life. That is what we want. We want our children to be able to read and write and to think for themselves, and we demand that the children who fear God are protected in your schools.
Our next speaker is John Amancukulu, followed by Robin Livingston. Again, following John Amancukulu, there will, Robin Livingston will be our speaker to follow.
I come to read a book today entitled Worm Loves Worm, and this book is a form of mental rape, because it assaults the soul, it stains the brain, and it robs children of their innocence. It's not grooming, even though that's appropriate. It's not indoctrination, although that's appropriate. It's mental... although that's appropriate. It's mental rape. And every person who endorses mental rape, you are a mental rapist. That goes for librarians, that goes for board members, it goes for superintendents, and all of the above. It's mental rape. This book talks about two worms who get married, and the worms can be both grooms and brides. It's all interchangeable. That's what this filth talks about, and it's available for children as early as the age of five years of age in Wake County. And this is what you call gender confusion. Kids go to school to find out that two worms can get married, and one can, both can be the groom, and both can be the bride, and they can both get married and just enjoy life. And then it says in here, it says, you know, it's not normally done like that, where, you know, you could just be interchangeable, and one can pick to be the groom, and one can pick to be the bride. And it says, well, you know what? We'll just change how it's done. And that's what the focus of this is, to change normative behaviors. I have a message that I received from a homosexual man by the name of Walt. He sent it to me recently. I'll read it to you. It says, "Sorry, but I'm gay, and even I understand that children are being groomed to adopt a form of sexuality early on. This is not how children learn and grow, but how children are deceived, preen, and programmed to accept what was previously unacceptable." Now, y'all can label my words as hate speech, homophobia, bigot, a Black man in America who doesn't know his place, you know, because I choose to not be a liberal. You can call it whatever you want, but at the end of the day, is Walt using hate speech? He agrees with me, because Walt knows this, that in order for a person to be homosexual, it takes a person who is a heterosexual to create them. Because in homosexuality, two men will never reproduce. Two women will never reproduce. It takes heterosexuality, Chris, as you roll your eyes. It takes heterosexuality to create a child, not homosexuality. And Tyler, as you turn around your chair and you pretend to walk out as you're angry, you too are complicit with this mess.
Our next speaker is Robin Livingston, followed by Jennifer Lapps. Robin Livingston. Robin Livingston. Okay. Jennifer Lapps, followed by Sada Marianov.
Hello. Thank you, board members, for allowing me to speak today. I want to speak on support of applying for the Fostering Diverse Schools and Demonstration Grant that you guys talked about and learned about in your work meeting today. I think it ties into the importance of equity policies and increasing socioeconomic diversity. I'm deeply concerned about the negative comments made during school board meetings that have attacked books and libraries and have gone on for months after months. My opinion of the purpose of this is performative, and to decrease the support for funding for North Carolina public schools, including Wake County schools. If you want to really worry about books and materials, I believe personally, that is easy to do. You can go to librarians that are highly trained. You can talk to your schools. If you don't want materials, to go home with your children. The General Assembly in North Carolina is about to move millions of dollars that will take some funding away from our public schools and reallocate it towards private schools that have no accountability, limited, limited testing, they don't have anything with curriculum or requirements of what types of books that, that can be offered to students. I think this is a travesty, and that this will really decimate a lot of our public education schools. I want my children to be a part of this school board. I want them to be a part of the government, and I want them to learn about that. And I do believe that, that they should be a part of the audience of this. I, as a parent, will decide when I start to bring them to things like this. But I believe when they are teenagers, especially, my children will be 18 when they are in high school, so they could easily be in one of your positions when they turn, and when they graduate from the, from Wake County schools. So I think it's important for them to listen to it, and if it is really about the materials, then I would encourage parents and family members to say, "I don't believe in this for my child, so I can do something different about it." But to stand up and to perform and to read materials that are obscene is really exposing more children to those types of materials, and restricting parents from actively participating in their government. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Sada Marianov.
Hi, my name is Sada Marianov. I just graduated from Jordan High School one week and one day ago in Durham, North Carolina. Yeah, and I'm happy to be here. Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone here for sitting through this meeting, but also allowing me to speak. Kati Moore, thank you for doing what you do. You are a true role model for young women who would also like to be a leader, so thank you. Now, I'd like to say that we are living through a very dangerous time, a time in which queer children are facing unsafe learning environments, a time in which LGBTQIA+ students are being attacked on the basis of their gender identity, not only by their peers, but also by some of their teachers, and their peers' very vocal parents. I'd like to make everyone aware of this one very jarring fact. Queer students, especially those who, who exist in schools with book bans, are more than four times as likely to commit suicide than their non-queer peers. Four times. Now, everyone in this room has a choice. You can either support all students, or you can be directly responsible for endangering them. You can either save an LGBTQIA+ student, or you can be responsible for the death of one. I prompt everyone in this room to resist the extremist push for the banning of LGBTQIA-centered books. All queer students, like myself, deserve the right to receive an inclusive education, free from censorship or discrimination. Thank you. Have a good night.
That concludes our public comment for this evening.